Call the meeting to order of the Wilmer City Council for Monday, February 1st, 2016. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen. Anderson.
Here.
Aman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Meskey.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
We'll send for the Pledge of Allegiance and then after the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll take a moment to remember Tim Hunstead from Municipal Utilities. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tim Hunstead was an employee that worked at Municipal Utilities and a loss to our community, but also to the staff at Municipal Utilities, and I just wanted to remember him, so. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Sheen in hearing none, entertaining motion for the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for the consent items discussion. Councilmember Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull the Labor Minutes.
Okay, with the exception of the Labor Minutes, is there a motion to, or we have a motion in second, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Labor Minutes, Councilmember Johnson.
I'd like to amend the Labor Minutes to reflect my presence at that meeting I sat in for, Councilmember Anderson, a regular member of that committee. The minutes don't reflect it, and my wife reads all this stuff, and I think it'd be kind of nice if I'm present where I said I was last Wednesday night.
We certainly will cover for you.
Thank you.
Okay. I did mention that to the City Administrator prior to the meeting starting, so would you like the motion, those approved?
As amended.
Would you like to motion those approved as amended?
Yes, I would so move. Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion does carry. Next, we have a hearing on the ordinance to rezone from ag to government. Megan DeShepper, please. This is a public hearing, and after the public hearing is closed, it'll come before the council for action.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is a request of the Wilmer Public Schools to rezone property that they recently purchased on the southeast side of town. It's the hatched area on the map, formerly the Hawkinson property. The request is to rezone it from agriculture, which it currently has been its use, to government institutional for the purposes of developing a elementary school by the school.
Okay, is there any members of the public that wish us to speak to this issue? Sheen in hearing none, I'll close and bring it to council. Council, your wishes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the ordinance to rezone from agricultural to government institutional, assign it a number and publish it. Discussion, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a couple of questions just in the recent past, I was hoping that we could maybe address the property tax issue. Maybe we can just discuss it for public record, how property taxes currently work on agricultural land within city limits.
Mrs. Shepherd.
I can't answer that.
Mr. Halliday. Well, the general concept is an agricultural value was placed on that land comparable to ag prices here, and it was a taxable entity. Outside of the timing where it was purchased, and the first year they may have some, it will go to tax exempt. I'm not certain about the first year, buying it late in the year, there may be taxes yet next year to deal with, and the superintendent is here, he could make a comment. Sometimes it's related to timing.
Dr. Holm, if you could move to the mic, please.
It's my understanding that the school district would be paying some property tax because we closed on that property after July 1. So, that's the school district's understanding.
Correct. For 2016 coming up, they'll have it, and then it's off the tax rolls.
Councilmember Aman.
Just a question, thank you for being here.
A pleasure meeting you.
My name's Steve Aman.
Hi.
I'll maybe talk to you after the meeting if you're around, it might be very short. As far as the plans for going in and out, has this been discussed with, I'm sure, with our staff as far as how we're going to meet your needs on that proposed property for the new school building? My concern is obviously Trot Avenue, or Lakeland Drive, I should say, with the traffic and the increased traffic flow there, if that's going to have an impact for us to speed up the process of establishing or widening Lakeland Drive in that area and providing the services to it at the same time, so we're not duplicating or tearing things up twice. And I don't know what the, I haven't seen the plans, whether or not that'll all go to the Planning Commission. I was just curious how that's going to affect our long-term plans on Lakeland Drive for a three-lane or a turn lane, or a four-lane, and what property might have to be acquired for widening that street, and I'm wondering if that's going to impact you in your planning process right now.
I don't know that it would impact us in the planning process. I can tell you that on Wednesday afternoon, county officials, city officials, our architect and our finance director and myself will be meeting to discuss issues like utility access, street access. It's my understanding that Wilmer Avenue, which is the other major thoroughfare that touches that property, is a county consideration, and so we'll be working with all those groups. Our tentative plans really are sketched out, and it's merely a sketch. It isn't anything firm to have access from Lakeland. However, I think it's yet to be determined whether that's what'll actually happen.
Additional discussion. Sheen in hearing none, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fagerly.
Welcome, Dr. Holm.
Thank you.
I represent the Third Ward, as Steve does, and there's some concerned citizens on 23rd Street. It's Par Lane, it's a condo unit, and then it's Sunrise Slab Homes there.
Mm-hmm.
And a few years ago, they were told there would be a road going between those two properties. I don't know if you can see it, right where the curve is.
There's a ditch between there, is that what you're talking about?
There's a ditch, yep. But there's a space for a future road. Do you have plans to put an entrance into that, or is it just going to be a wide sidewalk? Or aren't you that far yet?
We aren't that far yet. I guess, I wasn't aware that there was a plan or any sort of promise for a road to enter from that direction. I think we have had preliminary discussions about potentially having some sort of walking access across that ditch area for any students who may be coming from that area north and east, but that's very, very preliminary at this point.
So we just got to wait and see, then?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Additional discussion.
One thought.
Councilmember Aman.
I'm trying to recall if there are sidewalks on that side of Wilmer Avenue or not.
Yeah, on the north side, it's a walking path by Minnigasco and up to 23rd, yeah.
Okay.
But not the other way.
Not the other way. Okay, thanks, Rick.
Councilmember Nelson.
I know the group that's been meeting about bikes and walking, there's been some conversations about a bike path with that, so I think there have been interests expressed about how they will access both walking and biking with that, so hopefully that'll be something that'll be taken into consideration when you're working on it.
We certainly want students who access it from all directions to be able to access the school safely and with minimum contact with automobiles, if we can. Of course, we have to get farther in the planning process, and also, of course, see what budgets allow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. So, the roll call will be to adopt the ordinance, assign it a number and publish it. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The ordinance is adopted. I see we just had a group of Boy Scouts come in, so John or Bruce, would one of you want to just come to the mic and introduce what group you're with, so that we can put it on the official record? I think you've planned a good meeting, I think this is going to be very short.
Short one, short agenda.
Exactly.
Bruce DeBlake, 827th Street Northwest, mayor, council, have a group of Boy Scouts here tonight, we are studying our citizenship in the community merit badge. It's one of the Eagle Required Merit Badges, and these boys are going through that, learning about the importance of our community, and what they can do and how things, our system of government works, and how things are done in our community. So, we have John Severance, one of our other scout leaders, have Dylan and Wyatt Larson, and a Grams and Ben Adams with me tonight, and we'll say we are part of Boy Scout Troop 565, we're sponsored by the Wilmer VFW, so.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Next, we have Human Rights Commission Statement, Councilmember Anderson.
We put this on the agenda because I had said that we would have a little bit of a discussion or presentation on the Human Rights Commission as we sought to get it activated, and we are going to be activating it. It's an organization that's been in place, it's just been silent for a while, and I'll call on our City Administrator Cruz to maybe enlighten us a little bit.
Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the Human Rights Commission was established by ordinance in February of 1994. The mission of the Human Rights Commission is to facilitate equal opportunity and improve human relations for all citizens of the city of Wilmer, and further to assist the Minnesota Department of Human Rights in implementing the Minnesota State Act Against Discrimination. Bylaws for the commission were adopted in 1994. The Human Rights Commission acts as an advisory capacity and relays civil rights problems to the mayor, council, and other agencies of government. The purpose of the Human Rights Commission is to enlist the cooperation of agencies, organizations, and individuals in the community to be an active program directed to create equal opportunity and eliminate discrimination and inequalities. The commission is to provide leadership in recognizing and resolving potential problems in areas of the community. Some of the issues dealt with in the past were driver's license issuance for Spanish-speaking individuals, promote interaction between diverse community members, addressed issues with regards to senior citizen and activities at the community center, and handicap accessibility issues. The Human Rights Commission is likely to meet monthly for the first couple of months, and then quarterly or as determined by the group, and they're potentially up to about 12 members. The mayor will be appointing the chairperson and vice-chairperson. The first meeting is anticipated to be held on February 18th at 4:45 to 6:00 p.m. approximately, and at a location to be determined.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make note, we do have a number of people that have been appointed by the city council, and I think there were a couple more that are coming forward. This group is advisory, you know, and can't set policy, make policy, or anything like that. Our first meeting, as Mr. Cruz said, is February 18th at 4:45.
Okay. Any questions from the council on that at all?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Aman, Councilmember Aman, I'm sorry.
You know, the question was brought up a while back, like Mr. Fagerly asked the question, what they're going to be doing. Aren't all complaints have to be filed through the Department of Human Rights, correct? If there is a complaint.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Aman, I think the local commission is a sounding board to resolve some of those complaints, it's a step in the process, and I believe that they would have the option to do it at the local level, or perhaps go directly to the state, but I'm not sure on that.
Mr. Scott, are you any more prepared to answer that question than, or we can bring it back to the next meeting otherwise?
I can generally say, I think if there's a formal legal complaint that would need to be filed with the appropriate forum, it would not be the city's local Human Rights Commission, which, as Councilmember Anderson noted, would be advisory. Otherwise, I agree with the city administrator's comments about the role of the city's commission.
Thank you, and the other question I had, as far as the amount of complaints, what complaints have we had? We've been aware as the reason for this committee to be reactivated, again, what's the primary reason for it, and what do they plan to accomplish, or what does the mayor, Mr. Meskey, plan in accomplishing by doing this? Obviously, there must be some needs, because it was acted on, I think, because, Sean, if I may quote you, I think you wanted to have the Human Rights Commission activated or reactivated again. I'm just curious, what are the primary intentions, or what are the reasons for it? Have we had a plethora of complaints in our community? I'm not aware of any if there has been, and I was just wondering if anybody could enlighten me on that.
Mr. Councilmember Anderson, would you like to respond to that, and then go to Councilmember Meskey after that?
You know, I don't know that there had been a number of complaints. I think what this will do will be to provide an avenue, a place for people to bring concerns, and the commission will listen to those. At this point, there probably wasn't a good place for people to bring concerns forward, and so I think that's primarily what it is, and it's going to be an educational process for the folks as they come forward, and also for the commission, what's the best way to handle their concerns.
Councilmember Meskey, would you like to respond to the question that was directed at you?
Yep, that'd be fine. First, I've looked around at all of the Human Rights Commissions that have posted, if you Google "Human Rights Commissions," you'll get a whole listing of things. There's only a couple of them that actually mediate discrimination complaints, and they're Bloomington and St. Louis Park, but they have attorneys that are put on there for that purpose. That's not what my intent was here. I think the heart of what people have talked about is exactly what this needs to do. Advise council on law and range programs to improve community relations in the city, things like this, develop formal and informal educational program, again, to provide leadership, advocacy, intended to secure human and civil rights, recommendations on policies or actions that they think that would benefit the city, but none of them would be acting, I actually served on the Human Rights Commission back when it was founded, none of the things that were brought forward were ever a decision-making body. It was only advisory, and that would be what I would recommend as well.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson. I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson.
I did take a look at the state statute on this when I saw it on the agenda. I haven't seen the bylaws or the constitution for our commission, for the city, yet, but the state statute does provide the local commissions may defer matters under jurisdiction to the commissioner of the Department of Human Rights, but it also provides the charging party has the option of filing a charge either with a local commission or the state. But like I say, I haven't looked at our bylaws, so I don't know what the scope of authority our commission handles, but depending on, you know, that might limit it, but I haven't seen those yet, so I don't know.
Thank you. Can I add any questions? Councilmember Aman?
Thank you.
Better explanation, good discussion.
Councilmember Nelson.
I think, listening to Mr. Cruz read those, I think going back to the, just community conversations, a place for people to have a place to go to ask some questions, or to be referred, or those types of things, so I think that's really important to the community. It's kind of what I hear, where people don't feel they have a place to go to, and I'm hoping that it'll be that and provide us with community conversations also, both for staff and our community, on things that we need to work on. So, I thought, when you read that, it's still very much needed in our community with what, you know, goes back to 1994, so I'm pleased to hear that that structure is already in place, so.
I'll just make a statement on it as well, seeing that I was referenced. First off, it will be my intent to appoint the chair and the vice-chair to those positions. I think that there are things that have happened in our community even since I've been mayor, that this board or commission, if it were up and operating and people felt comfortable coming to it, I think things would have came to that area. I think specifically of the conversations that took place at St. Mary's Church in regards to the licensing issue, the issue with the League of Women Voters, where they talked about licensing for felons, and giving them the right to have a license. Those are some community dialogues that have happened within the last year. I think this would be a good place for this. I strongly support the Human Rights Commission, which I've stated numerous times and will continue to state, and I certainly think that we've got a great group of people, very diverse. We did have a question that had come up a couple council meetings ago, to have people grouped that were not represented, that being specifically disabled, and so this last two-week cycle, I've been able to search out and find somebody in that area as well, at the recommendation of one of the council members. So that, I have been trying to be responsive of what I'm hearing from the council, to make sure that we have good representation. We are still lacking in the Latino population base, but I have tried making inroads there and have not been successful. I did have a council member offer their support to reach out within the community, Councilmember Anderson had told me that he would be willing to look at that, so you may see a name or two coming through yet of that people group, so. We want everybody to feel comfortable here in Wilmer, and that is why I've supported it, so. I believe we're just having a statement here to bring the council up to speed what was going on, because Councilmember Anderson said he was going to do that, so. Unless there's other questions, we'll move on to consideration of introduction of ordinance for the sale of city-owned real estate. Megan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city recently approved the purchase agreement with Dooley Brothers for the sale of three lots in the industrial park. It's just west of County Road 5 in the new industrial park expansion area. The next step in the process would be to introduce the ordinance for a public hearing at your next meeting.
Council, what do you wish to do?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce an ordinance for a public hearing to be held on February 16th. Discussion. Sheen in hearing none, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, the motion does carry. Thank you, Megan. Next, announcement of committee meeting dates. Finance.
Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee will meet Monday, February 8th at 4:45.
Public Works, Public Safety.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Labor.
No meeting scheduled, just our big event next week for the retreat, that's where our time's going to be spent.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, the retreat is on Tuesday, and that would be normally a Public Works meeting, and perhaps we could move that to Wednesday?
Either way is fine.
If that would work with the council.
I believe what I heard is that there was no recommendation as to a Public Works meeting, or do you know, does Public Works want to meet?
I think there are a number of business items to trans.
So we'll move Public Works, Public Safety to Wednesday, the 10th.
If that's okay.
4:45, City Hall. Community Development.
I believe there's one Thursday, the 11th, but Bruce isn't here.
Thursday, 11th, yeah, Bruce is out of town tending to a new grandchild, so. Any other committee meeting? Okay. Sean, would you like to tell us about an event happening this week at Wilmer Community Center?
Absolutely, I was asked to share this, and I am happy to do so. The Wilmer Community and Activity Center on Highway 71, across from Robins Island, is hosting two meetings to gather input from the public. The meetings will be held on Thursday, February 4th at 3:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. at the community center. Two meetings with identical agendas are being held to make it easier for people with varying schedules to attend. A brief overview and tour will be followed by discussion of future vision, values, uses, and activities of the center. The meetings are open to the public, and people of all ages and interests are encouraged to attend.
Thank you. So again, the council has been invited to that. I would also invite the public to attend that event, again, out at the community center, either 3:00 o'clock or 6:00 o'clock this Thursday evening. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Wilmer Community Activity Center has a couple of music programs scheduled, one on Saturday, February 13th at 2:00 p.m., performances by Dempsey Schrader and Maggie Harp. It's free, no admission, open to the public, and they're also having an additional music presentation, the acoustic bluegrass and old country jam on Sunday afternoon. I don't have the hours in front of me, I had a poster, but I'm not finding it here where I thought I put it, but those are scheduled, and it's being posted around town, but both those events will be at the Wilmer Community Activity Center. It sounds like some fun, so, and no charge.
No charge for either.
Yeah.
Great, excellent. Some good opportunities right here in our community to get out and enjoy some of the arts, and again, free is a good price, so. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Aman.
One, Mr. Mayor, I thought of bringing it up for discussion. Several years ago, the city council went on record to record our meetings at the, all of our subcommittee meetings that we have. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a good idea for us to also have recordings for all the other committees that we have, Planning Commission, zoning boards of appeals, Human Rights Commission, all these, you know, to hear the dialogue of what really transpires at the meeting, and I think that would be a good policy that we could probably set if we want to. I just thought of bringing it up for discussion. It's been on my mind for quite a while, so that the public can actually hear from the people that are representing them, what their statements are. This may also apply to the Economic Development Commission also, the EDC. That way, people have access to the information, what really was said at the meeting. I thought of bringing it up for discussion, I don't know what committee would deal with that. It may be referred to committee for discussion or input right here from the council. The other issue I had was.
You want to deal with that issue first, and just kind of see?
We could deal with that, I'd like to hear.
Mr. Cruz, is that something that you think would be appropriate for the retreat, or something that'd be appropriate to send to a committee, or what was your recommendation on that?
Well, I'd like some discussion by the council. I'm open to recording. When you talk about economic development meetings, there's many times sensitive information. I'm not sure about the Human Rights Commission, how that's going to work or function. We want to, you know, people to come and be able to have good conversations, and that may hinder some of that, so I guess I'd like to know what the council thinks about that.
Council, what's your wishes? Councilmember Anderson.
You know, on its face, it doesn't seem like a bad idea. I'm wondering, is there, and I'll ask the city, is there a lot of work to take the recording and put it on our website? I mean, are we creating a burden in that regard?
Mr. Mayor and council, Councilmember Anderson, I don't think necessarily there's a lot of work, it's just logistics, and it's a function that has to be done and followed up on, so it's not something that obviously would prevent us from doing it. Maybe the bigger question for the council-
Maybe the bigger question for the council is, from a policy perspective, when you have sensitive information, be it economic development or maybe the human rights, if that's something that you want to do, and maybe it's something that you can dip your toe into and see how those meetings go. They are public meetings where people can come and attend, so.
Okay. Much?
I think the other thing that happens with that is then, I mean, we're going to have to look at our records retention policies, and how long do we have to keep that information, and that's going to be an added expense for storage, so that we have all of that available. I think a lot of times, we open up these doors of Pandora's, and we don't understand all the tales that are associated with them, and, you know, I think some of that stuff might even be a legal issue, so I think we have to be very careful dipping our toes here. Obviously, there was a decision by the former council that they didn't do that, so we should check with some historical facts, Kevin probably, on why they didn't do it back when all of the other recordings happened.
Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I got a note here, just mentioning that we do tape Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Airport Commission already, and they're available on the website.
Okay.
Openness and transparency, that's all I'm asking for the council to consider. I think it'd be good to involve citizens in our community, be aware of what's really going on, and I think recorded information is a lot better than verbal or handwritten and condensed onto one sheet of paper. I think you get a better feel from the community of what's really going on, and I think if we're really going to involve the citizens, it would be to our benefit to have openness and transparency. That's the primary reason for it. Again, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, to feel the council out on that particular issue, and that's all I have to say about that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson?
I have a concern just with what we have the legal rights to in what's considered a public meeting. I think it needs to be open and transparent, but I would have a concern for when you have multiple entities, does that mean that, you know, we're representing the city at something? Do we have the right to tape that whole conversation? I don't know about the Human Rights Commission, that's something that belongs with the city, but before we expect that, I think, sometimes I think we cross the lines with what we expect is our legal right to have access to things with different organizations too, so it feels like this is something that should be studied and shouldn't be discussed at the end of the meeting, so I would hope we would refer this somewhere and have a conversation, and also talk about what we are, you know, what we have the right to see or right to listen to, so.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Aman?
I agree.
Let's try to move the conversation.
Yeah, I just want to support the idea. My intention was here to get direction from the council and bring it to a committee, and I think it warrants some further discussion and input from all the people on the council. It could be an issue at the retreat, but again, I wanted to bring it up and see what the council thought about it as a group.
Thank you. Second item?
The second item was, this may have been discussed, and I see our city engineers are here this evening, but with the, I'm sure the concerns of the whole council has been, we all think we're going to get a better bang for our buck with the oil prices that have gone down significantly, which will have an impact on our budget and what we're planning and doing for street reconstruction this year. I'm a strong advocate of the maintenance of our streets, which I feel is lacking, and I think after talking with Sean, our city engineer, he'll probably concur that there is a lot more maintenance that needs to be done as far as seal coating and crack sealing, which is an obligation of the city to take care of that in our budget rather than delaying that. That should be an obligation, that should be part of our ongoing budget each year, and I think it's been neglected. In fact, if you look at our streets, it has been neglected, and I just wonder if this time, I'd like to refer the issue maybe to Mr. Cruz or to staff to maybe consider enlarging our street improvement project this year for more maintenance of our streets so that the taxpayers are going to get the best deal possible, maybe for quite a while. Unless oil prices go up very quickly, it's kind of a crapshoot, but I think it warrants more investigation as to see whether or not we can take advantage of the situation right now.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilmember Johnson?
I believe that our city engineer, Mr. Christensen, already addressed that. I was trying to remember if it was at a Public Works conversation, that it wasn't there, so perhaps instead of bringing it back, we could just have something sent out to us, because I do think he already answered that question at the Public Works meeting not that long ago, so, and if it wasn't in the minutes, he could at least share that again.
And it'd probably be on a recording if we listen to it, if you're saying it was covered there. Councilmember Johnson?
I just have another announcement, Mr. Mayor. If this discussion is done, I don't want to interrupt it.
Just one other comment, if I could, before you. We write, Ms. Nelson, we did discuss that briefly, but there was never any cost associated with how far behind we are and what the cost savings may be if oil prices continue. If that's the situation, I think we might have to reconsider looking at our financial, our finances this year and putting more money into street maintenance, and that's my concern to take advantage of this opportunity, and I'll leave it at that. It can be referred to committee.
Mr. Cruz, can we refer that to Public Works, Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another announcement with respect to the Wilmer Community Activity Center. The board there wants to, is going to, as scheduled, this Thursday, a couple of outreach meetings for the community, and they're interested.
I think Councilmember Mesky has already addressed those.
Yeah, okay, I mean, we want to invite all the members of the council and the mayor too, so.
The council mayor should plan on attending that, right?
Thank you.
You bet. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion adjourned.
Second?
Where adjourned?